Good evening. In the preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. May I be confirmed that all members are present and can hear me? Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Steve Chambers.
Present.
Todd Corain.
Present.
Rakesh Nalan.
Present.
Ronald Brooks. All officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Townplainer Adam Menard.
Here.
Staff Assistant Rachel Pressley.
Here.
Good evening. This is open meeting of the Auburn Planning Board. Tuesday, October 12th, now called to order at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Davis' consecutive order, March 12th, 2020, and extended to June 16th, 2021. This meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. The public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121, and enter access code 133747477. Or the public can join via computer at thegotomeeting.com/join/133747477. Remote access information is posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here in the audience signed as recording tonight's meeting? There's being none according to those members of the Planning Board, employees, or members of the public who participate remotely. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Please take care not to screen share your computer, and you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join us in the smooth of the floor. Point of view is to comply.
The United States of America, to the public, which stands under the Constitution of Justice.
All supporting material that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow and think of the agenda. Meeting ground rules. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, may I be to cover some ground rules to effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure minutes. I cheer for on the agenda. If they conclude their remarks, the chair and other line of members are finding each by name, providing common questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and into the microphone in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. I would like to remind the audience and applicants to town administration, each of the Planning Board members, to please refrain from asking questions. We've got us to all matters discussed in this evening without first being granted my consent. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a rule call vote. First on the list is A&R, Eddie Obarboza, 29th Route, Burnap Street. Is there anyone here representing?
Yes.
Please perform.
What is it?
Yeah. Oh, fuck up. Just give us a rundown. I don't even plan to know. I think we all have a pretty good idea, but...
Yeah, well, we just, we built the house on the number 25 of Burnap, and we built a retaining wall on the backyard. And the retaining wall was stepped like a couple wings on the neighborhood yard. So, our agreement, he decided to sell me one foot, straight line on his backyard. And that's...
That way you comply with your bylaws.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions, Steve?
No.
Todd?
No questions.
Ron, if you're there, do you have any questions? Any public comment? There being none, may I have a motion to approve the A&R for Eddie Obarboza, 29th Burnap Street?
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Rakesh?
Aye.
Steve? Aye, John Regan, as an aye, as a vote.
Thank you very much.
You want to sign this motion to item now?
Yep.
Next up, the adjourned at 7:00 P.M. applicant Suzanne Senneco requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.3.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for daycare at 410 Packagock Street, Auburn Mass. 01501, map 33 parcel 100. Is there anyone representing Susan Senneco to me? Good evening. There's a quick rundown of what you plan on doing. I've read the material here.
I just moved here from Worcester. I've been doing daycare for...
About the house from the board, yes.
Yeah. Thirty-two, two years I've been doing daycare. And I didn't know you needed a permit, so here I am, because I want to continue my, my job doing daycare.
Does anybody have any questions, Steve?
No. I do have a question, maybe for Adam, is there? Do we need like a detailed site plan, or is this enough?
Well, they kind of gave us this catch.
That's good, sufficient.
I know the property well. I used to live there. In the lot apartment.
Sounds good. No other questions?
Yeah.
On your 700-foot approximate space in the front, fenced off the front yard off the porch. Is that, what are the dimensions of that?
Uh, seven, seven, yeah. The, I got approved by the state already.
But those dimensions?
Yeah.
They just look a little small, the 700 square feet. My only question is, I have two. One is parking, driveway is only two cars wide, and two cars deep. You know what I mean? Four cars total.
And then there's the street on the side.
That's Maple Street.
Yeah, there's, there's parking spaces there, too. I usually park there. My car parks there.
That would be go up behind your property, it's behind your property, correct?
It's a side of the property.
The driveway is off Packagock, right?
Yeah, the driveway is off of Packagock.
Right.
Exactly.
The main driveway is off Packagock, and then there's Maple Ave.
Right, and there's like...
It's all the way up to the back.
And you can have like three cars right there.
In line.
In line.
Side by side.
Yeah.
And how many each were you going to be doing a day?
Um, I have four.
Oh, four. I drop off, you'll pick up at 4:05. Um, one more question, why did you put it in the back there? It's long in there, always go along.
Because of the hot tub. We have a hot tub.
Oh, that's on the deck, right?
It's off the deck.
Oh, okay.
It's just better, safer, you know?
I don't see any problem. Could I have a motion to?
John, I have one, one more question.
I got, I have a second.
Yeah.
Have a motion to open the hearing?
Make a motion to open the hearing?
I have a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, myself, John Regan, aye.
Public comment?
Any public comment?
I have a question.
Sure.
Hi. I'm just wondering, does it, does it affect the way my neighborhood is zoned? I live across the street from this...
I know where you live.
Yeah. Um, I remember you, too.
Well, I agree, I know what you're doing.
No. Does it affect how our neighborhood is zoned?
I don't think so, because there used to be daycare across the street from where you are.
ID readers.
ID readers, yeah. So I don't think it will affect the zoning of the...
Does not.
Does it affect the property value?
102 Packagock has, has a daycare as well, small family, and it doesn't affect it.
Does it affect the property value or anything? I just, this is just junior requests.
Robbery values in Auburn? I don't think it's going to affect anything, you're going to go up. It's, you know, I don't, I don't think it should have a problem. It's a small area out front. And, uh, as long as they, they're approved by the state, and as long as they stay with them, they'll, you know, noise and all that, which I don't think the poor kids are going to make a tunnel all the time. It's only during the day, it's not at night, so, it's a bonus. So, anybody on the board have any question?
One, one, it's not a question, but I think the license, I think you have, you have to renew in November?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I actually, I have October 26th is when I renew. But I also had the licensor come out to, to check.
Oh, they do come in, okay.
To check, to make sure it's all safe in the new home. They already did that.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to go through the whole house, see what's in the play area, you have to go through that.
Exactly, right.
It is.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with this.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Because I live right across the street. I look at it, and it's fine. I just wondered if there's any chance the sign that says Sue's Daycare, could maybe be moved so it's not right in the front of the house, attached to the house, or whoever it's named. Maybe put it on the side of the fence, like what the driveway is, maybe? Just for the aesthetics of the neighborhood.
Can I make a suggestion that might appease everybody? Hanging out at 8:00 in the morning, checking out the 4:00 after.
I, I think that the people going there know they're going there. I mean, I don't know what the capacity could be, but they know where they're going already.
I have six.
Capacity of six total?
Yeah.
So probably know where they're going. It's kind of right there.
I haven't seen the sign.
It's on my porch.
How big is that? It's on the porch.
That big.
Smaller than a sign or a political sign? I thought in Auburn you couldn't actually have signage like, like that in general? As a permanent sign?
To advertise your business?
Correct.
What type of business is the town?
No, 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 no.
Daycare.
No, daycare in, in, you know, in residential areas?
Um, I think, not the housing, I think the one on, uh, Jerome Street has a sign.
Well, they, that's, they, they're different. Like 102 Packagock, years ago, we're told they could not have a permanent sign as a daycare.
Auntie Regan, I had a sign. I mean, people know where they're going.
Yeah. Let's show the sign. I was, you know, let the building commissioner in town take a look at it. It wasn't permanent. I felt the question. Even after advertise any sites. I don't know if he's looked at yours yet. Is it any sign of permanent sign?
He did. He came by and he told me where to put it, and I put it where he told me to put it. Because it was on the fence.
Oh, you got it right on the fence?
I had it right on the fence, and I put it where he told me to put it.
But there's like the front of the fence, and then there's the sides here, so maybe it could go on the one side. The driveway is.
I, I didn't, I didn't understand what you're saying, but if it's on the side, no one's going to see it, no one's going to know it's a daycare center.
I mean, if it's jurisdiction of the building commissioner, and the building commissioner already determined where to put it, I think that's, that's not something on his board.
Right. Correct. You don't take that over the building commissioner?
It was just a suggestion.
No.
You know, I was trying to think it.
You do have to state the name and address, though.
I'm sorry, Evelyn Hepburn, 413 Packagock Street.
So was there any other public comment or questions? Anyone on the board? May I have a motion to approve the daycare?
Take a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I myself, John Regan, aye, as well. May I have a, a motion to approve the daycare center at 410 Packagock Street?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
All those in favor? Steve?
Aye.
Aye.
I myself, John Regan, aye, as well, sir.
Thank you. Do any limit, thank you.
I'll second your decision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up on the list is applicant Path of Management Incorporated requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.2.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for 12 Townhouse at 262 Central Street, Auburn Mass. 01501, map 56 parcel 82. Continued from 9/28/2021. Is there anyone from the applicant present? Either via hotline or in this room?
Yes, we did, we did someone request a daycare.
I'll try to turn you up, no problem. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, good evening. This is the Auburn planning. And I'm here tonight to represent the management. At the last public hearing, I'd like to address a few of the issues that were raised. Um, the neighbor to the dealer, the property, had mentioned that one of the contractors for Fazal Management had damaged his front yard when he drove across it by accident. So our client has spoken with him, and he has repaired that damage at that site, so let Mickey Boyland wear it back. Um, secondly, it was mentioned that, um, that, uh, Dell Fazal Management might be interested in buying some abutting properties in its neighborhood. And I'd just like to make it clear that they're not interested in buying any of the abutting properties in this neighborhood. So, um, we don't have the evidence, so we're surprised to hear that at the meeting. But yeah, that brings the show, then they're not looking to buy up any of the properties in this neighborhood. And then, the other thing I would request is, we received an engineering review from Graves Engineering. And it's an excellent review, but we did find a couple of tight draft areas that we'll have to fix. And we also have a letter from the fire department, and the water department, and the water department, their comments. So, we have to make some revisions to the plans to accommodate everyone's comments. And so I'm going to request a continuance of one month, that would give us time to make revisions, and would give Graves opportunity to review those revised plans. And then, let's call it quite the same time.
Uh, is there any comment from the board? You know, is there any public comment?
Uh, Mark Merrick, my wife and I own a property at 262 Central. Can he hear me over, oh, can he hear me now?
I think so.
Okay, what exactly did you do to fix my lawn?
You said up here, you'll have better sound, I guarantee.
What exactly did you do to fix my lawn? Because I just came from there, and it really didn't appear like anything was done.
I, I don't know what he did. He told me earlier today that he had taken care of it. So I don't know exactly what he did.
Well, that's convenient, but I mean, it's easy to say you did something, but you, but you didn't do it. I mean, I got pictures to show that it wasn't done. You didn't do the work. You could have responded to me that night at the meeting, but you chose to walk back past me.
I'm sorry, I'm just telling you what he told me. Be, be, be pleased with the daycare. I'll mention it, send to my own, make sure it gets taken care of.
Well, for, for the record, it was not repaired. We were there just a few hours ago, and the tire marks are still on my lawn. It's not a big deal. But it's just, um...
It's a principle.
It's the principle and the fact that, you know, you're coming off as being kind of arrogant towards your butters. Would anybody like to see the pictures?
I believe you.
Okay.
Why would you come here and state that if you didn't take the pictures?
All right.
Why I ask the question, because I don't know the answer.
That's funny.
Anybody else have any public comment? Are you all unserved? Please come, please come forward, state your name and address.
So, my name is Nancy Artsen, and I live at 8 Prentice Ave. So, one of the things that they said, well, what they were going to do was fix the pool part. So, this is what they did. This is the kind of people we're dealing with in this neighborhood, with this whole fazel place. They poked holes through the whole pool to let the water run out all over the property, all over everybody else's property, that time that they were told to clean up the property, and all down Prentice Ave. So they have no care for any of the people in the neighborhood. If you go there, you'll see about 20 holes. They poked holes through the whole pool and let the water go everywhere.
The pools go out?
Yeah. Yeah, but they poked the holes to let all the water out the very next day. Because I was walking the neighborhood with my dog, and I was like, where is this water? It was running everywhere through the whole neighborhood. Instead of doing it responsibly, what most people do is put a hose, they let it out, go down the street. This is what we're dealing with already. This is not a good start. I just wanted to let that be known.
I appreciate your comment.
Thanks.
Please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm Joe Fontaine. I live in 2 Thomas Avenue. I am directly behind, these are my homes right there. Those two. I took pictures that I could show you, because I don't know how to do it otherwise. But from the back of 2, in the middle, to this property, which is level, 262, is a 12-foot rise. So, when I, if, and if I showed the pictures, you'd see, from my backyard, I stood on my steps and just looked out back. I have beautiful trees that are up there right now. None of that would be there. And from both sides of my property, affecting both of my houses in the Dunny Hughes property, will be buildings 30 feet up above my property. There is no fence big enough to stop them from looking onto my property. I will have absolutely no privacy. My animals will be going absolutely crazy with things behind us all day long. I don't know how you can possibly allow this to go in single-family units, where nobody infringes on anybody else's privacy, but yet this will take care of three homeowners who have been in this area for over 35 years. All we want is our privacy. And again, no fence can do that. There is no fence that can bear their all. And the wildlife, the foxes, raccoons, the rabbits that go through there, they'll all be displaced. I mean, I know nobody cares, but where are they going to go?
I wouldn't say nobody cares.
I care. I do care, because we see them. We've had deer up there, but deer not as often. But you just don't want them to disappear. And I do know that the water did flood down when they do that, but the pool. It's just, it's not feasible for us.
When that happened, did anybody call anybody from the town and said that happened?
We didn't know what it was till after the fact. You just see water everywhere. So you're looking, you're saying, what is it? We inquired after the fact, and we found all the holes closed. So we didn't know at that time, right? And we didn't know what they were supposed to do or not. Like, is there any injunction until they clear up the part about being historical enough that they can't tear anything apart? Because it's easy to remove something and say, oh, it wasn't there. I'm not insinuating it could be done, but it could be done.
Sure, if you want to help, ask them to help.
Correct. The intel left you the water, everybody else's property.
Yeah.
Where can you do that? Go ahead, Steve.
Does this need to go on kind of zoning?
This is going to be for CBA, next great day required, special requirement.
So, and this is still, I am assuming RA over in this area? Or do they need to change that to, what kind of zoning is that? Is it residential?
It's RA.
It is?
It's great.
And then with this plan, it still can be an RA? It doesn't have to be RV or anything?
As we get all the public comments, I'll say something. Does anybody else like to make a public comment?
Anybody else that needs a comment, this is your chance.
I want to get everybody there doing their time. Now, it's a very sensitive issue.
I mean, I think the...
Okay.
I know.
State your name and address.
Yeah, so, I'm her husband. Now, but you got to state your name and address. I'm Steve, Steve Fontaine. Steve Fontaine, for the record, and again, yeah, my, my wife and I, we've lived at 2 Thomas, which abuts this property for a number of years, right, 35-plus years. So we've seen what's gone on around the development. And a number of years ago, I'm going to just reference the map for a minute. The Holstroms owned 273. And the parcel on 274, the gentleman in there passed away, okay? And you can see that that's a pretty large parcel. And I think, hopefully, we would all agree, I'm speaking for myself only, but there was, there was a thought there, okay, well, what are they going to do with that one property? And what they did was they subdivided it, right? And so they put three single-family homes, which conforms to the rest of the neighborhood. Now we want to take another property that's larger than that parcel. So that was approved. No one's, I don't think anybody's had an issue. We probably have some homeowners in here that lived there, right? And now we got a 262 unit that the Andersons owned, passed on to his family, and now these folks acquired it. But trying to drop a 12 condo unit into a subdivision that has all single-family homes, to me is like, what are we doing here? This just doesn't feel right. I mean, not to mention all of the other issues in terms of water usage, parking, the rubbish, the wildlife, and just the, the change of use. To me, just doesn't feel right for all of the people that have been here for a number of years and kind of made loving their residency for life, right? And so, I mean, I, I love Bernie Anderson. We had, we burnt a lot of brush out back here. We have a beer afterwards through the years, and it was a great, great butter. But this does not represent that neighborhood. This potential change does not represent that neighborhood. So that's my comment.
I hear you. Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else in public? Please come forward and state your name. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You got to come forward and state your name and your address, please. Hey, you both can come up.
Yeah, can we both come up?
Sure.
Can share the...
My name is Connie McBarney.
Hi, Valerie Samuel Rifkin, and we are part of the Auburn Historical Commission.
I, I was okay if I started, then I'm going to let Valerie sort of chip in here, because she did a lot of research. I just...
Just a second. I know it's against the rules here, but you have to take off your mask.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I can do that. I hate it. That's fine with me. Um, I said, I only speak as, in a moment. I just wanted it to go on record, because I've heard rumors, you know how the, the sites go, that the Historic Commission hasn't done anything. We did meet, and we sent you all a packet, I believe that you got, with a lot of research that's been done, and our concerns that to our historical neighborhood and historical central street, and I, and I'm a newbie. I'm a rookie. I haven't been here since 2008, so I know nothing. But I do know the value of the people of Auburn, and that's why I got on the Historical Commission. So I know Valerie did a lot of research. And I, for me, I just wanted to go on record that you do have a packet from the Historical Commission that we did go to bat for our town, and I, because I heard that, what's the Historical Commission doing about it? And I just thought it was important that went on record publicly, that we are very concerned, so.
Again, hi, Valerie Samuel Rifkin, 14 Hilton Farm Road, on the Auburn Historical Commission. So again, just to echo what Connie has said, and the information in the packet, the Auburn Historical Commission does recommend that the house in some way be preserved. It is considered a historic site. It is on the Massachusetts, not the registry, but it is a listed historic house on the Massachusetts Historic Commission's database. It was built in 1762 to 1765, and it was owned by Mr. John Prentice Esquire. He was a deacon here in the town of Auburn, formerly Ward. And he was also the first captain of the Auburn militia, Ward militia at the time, in the late 18th century. So the home then passed to his son, Elijah, who owned the home through the, you know, early part of the 19th century. So just to clarify, there has been some concern that the home may have been part of the Underground Railroad. As historians, we look obviously for any type of historic record indicating that. We look for documentation of that. We were unable to come to any conclusion regarding that piece of, of the story here. The reason for that partly is because of the nature of the Underground Railroad and its need for secrecy. There's no documentation that we were able to, to determine. But we did do a lot of research on the original owner and holder of the home, Mr. John... But we did do a lot of research on the original owner and the holder of the home, Mr. John Prentice. And we found that he was a very important figure in the history of Auburn and the founding of Auburn. It's listed on the Mass, a historical site that he was one of the founding members who incorporated the town of the South Parish of Worcester, which later became Ward, which is later Auburn. Again, he was a lawyer. He was a deacon of the church. He was one of the first town clerks for Ward. And he was a representative to Massachusetts General Court. And again, he was the first captain of the Auburn militia. So, you know, while we, again, we weren't able to prove that the home was part of the Underground Railroad as some of the stories have been told. We know Worcester was a hotbed for abolitionist activity. It's highly possible that it was, but we cannot prove it. But we do feel that given the role of John Prentice in the history of Auburn, that the home should be preserved in some way.
All right. Thank you so much for coming here tonight. I really, really do. You explained a lot. Anybody that's watching this or watches the recording will learn about this. I read the whole thing. He was its founding father. Now, what does it take to get it designated as a historical site on the registry?
So, that's a much more intensive process. We need to go through a lot of documentation. So, that has not been done. The other thing that we brought up, we, we had a meeting, but it wasn't, we didn't have a forum, so it was not an official meeting. But one of the things we did discuss was the possibility of creating a historic district around Central Street, given that is the sort of historic heart of the town of Auburn. So, that's something that we can pursue as a town. But again, that takes, there are, and given that it was, you know, Drewing Tavern is there, the church and the old meeting house and the original cemetery for Auburn. John Prentice is buried in the cemetery on Central Street. We found his, his headstone and his family's there as well. So, that's something that the Historic District will be considering. We'll be considering to pursue a Historic District for the area, which would then, you know, have some implications for what people might do if they live in a Historic District with their properties.
So, let me ask this question. What would it take to put this on hold until the Historical Commission or whoever gets to finish the research to make this a designated historical site on the register of state investments?
That I don't know. It's a long process. It can take some time, but we can certainly do some research to figure out what it would take and get back to you. I don't have those exact...
Yeah, our chairperson couldn't be here tonight. She's out of...
You guys are doing a great job.
So, we will pass out this information to her and she is very extremely knowledgeable on, on that process. And she's done the process before, as you probably know. So, we'll get this information to her and I thank you for letting me share. You didn't want to put that...
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No.
Dorothy Agreeno for Prentice Ave. I just wanted you to know that just over the past week and a half, boards and nails have been hammered across doors and...
I see.
Yeah, it officially looks pretty, you know, destroyed. There was a lot of noise coming out of there and I don't know where it was coming from. I don't know what's going on inside the place, but nobody's gonna go in and see what's happening because we've been nailed out. And not that we would anyway, we'd be trespassing.
Right.
But just things were going on, you know, without permission.
If you just wanna help, ask the public to open this and stuff, so we can get it. So, we can thank you.
I, I agree with you. They asked them to lock the doors and everything. They asked them to plastic flywall on the front door, the side door, garage door. To make it look like it's something...
It looks condemned.
Yeah, it does. It does look condemned.
Sad.
It's, it's, she, she's a stately old girl. I went up there and looked at it, wanted to own property. Is there anyone else that has a public comment? Please come forward and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Debbie Johnson, out of the Peckerschuck Street, three oh seven. I'm a retired teacher and I believe in teaching moments. And I believe this would be a great, we will keep it. I don't believe in the cancel culture nowadays. It's just destroying our history. I actually have family from the beginning from Ace Ward back in fifteen hundreds in England. We've done, the Winchesters have been doing some processes, family historical and find out all of the different people related to. Wards, the Stones, the Winchesters, the Pierce's, the Fullers, our distillation to Robert Goddard. And I've been only in town for twenty-four years, or twenty-eight years. But it's like, to me, having that family history in this town goes very, very deep. And it just seems like we should do a little bit more to help out. Plus, being a teacher, I've seen how the schools are already getting crowded and now worried about more people coming in more. And they're gonna be building more schools. You're gonna have to because it's getting crowded now. And the more they let people in, that's something that isn't addressed. I just think that's something else they should look into.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank the historical people for putting that on Facebook because they taught me a lot and a lot of other people did too. And I know we need to, people were saying, oh, it's progress. Just shut up and let it go. I can't do that. That's the problem nowadays. It's too many people are doing that and just, oh, we just get rid of it. Get over it. It's supposed to be here. People say, get over it. No, because once you tear things down, is there anybody can get in the house? Is someone can get in to see if they find a hidden cupboard or something? Because I know we had looked at the house at Boydin, behind us, Peckerschuck, off Peckerschuck. Somebody had gone to that one. It was for sale. And we were told there was, we didn't see it, but we were told there was under the stairs. There was a place there. That was Boydin Residence, I think it was. It's a really, really old house behind the power lines. And we were told that also, it's a very old house in town, that that also was on the abolitionist...
I think the only way to get this ability is get permission from the owners. And I don't think you can get it.
No way. The historical people that...
But it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Right.
In this cycle.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else in the audience have any to say? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, I mostly have a question. My name is Pam Daniel. I live on Rydell Caves. It's nowhere, nowhere near there. But I was wondering, is it too late? Is this kinda like trying to get the, you know, the horse back in the barn after the doors are already open? I mean, can we stop the houses from putting condos there? Do they own it and there's nothing we can do, no matter what they find?
Well, they have a lot of hoops to jump through to get this approved.
And then, before they put their condos up?
Correct.
And call and knock down that house?
Yes, they can put their condos up.
Yeah, cause...
I'm not gonna say that because I don't know.
I mean, I also...
We're bound by the town bylaw. We're bound by the zoning board. We're bound by the planning board rules. So, unless they were handcuffed, but...
It won't happen fast. We could maybe stop it at some point.
They've already postponed for a month. So... CBA is next week. Is that a public hearing going on here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got notices on that. I mean, I'm for...
I'm not gonna say anything. I don't think I have to.
I'm for that they bought that parcel and that home for that amount of money, that small amount in this day and age to just knock it down and put condos. I mean, I agree also, Robin doesn't need another set of condos and definitely not in that neighborhood. It's a beautiful, quiet street and we don't need it. The traffic...
You realize what Prentice Ave was named after?
Yeah.
Named after John Prentice.
I mean, Robin's crap, it's crowded enough and I can't even drive. Anyway, that's my piece. Thank you.
Please come forward, state your name and address.
Deirdre Dunne, seven Prentice Ave. I just have a question, a couple of questions. You mentioned zoning earlier, RA. Is that residential area?
Oh, yeah, it is.
So, are you saying that the condos still fit in that zoning?
Yes.
They do? It's completely different dwelling.
Pretty much a different use.
Wow. But it'll turn into renters. Okay. So, I, I don't know. And the other thing is something that Doc brought up, Dadi Agreeno. Is there a way, now that we've mentioned, you know, historical people that came in and talked and the boarding of the building, is there a way to say, yes, you own this building, but there are great questions, serious questions here about the historical nature? Or is there a way to stop them from tearing everything out inside, which would ruin the historical?
An injunction until we know.
I mean, can the planning board do that and say?
Unfortunately, as far as I know, no. I don't have that authority.
So, they're gonna do it?
They gotta pull a building permit to do that.
Correct.
Right.
Be able to do that one, probably.
Is there any, like, anything that can be done to prevent that while there's so much of this in, in question? The reason why I ask is anyone then can just buy a piece of land and go and do whatever they wanna do and this is all for naught? I mean, that in the nicest of ways.
The planning board is restricted. You said a lot of laws on this regulation. It's only one of appeals with the special permit. Now, some way where there's different set of rules going with special permit. So, there is a little bit of right to take into account the nature of our neighborhood and the historical aspect of it. The planning board is less, is less, I guess you could say, to...
So, it is, so I, I understand what you just said about the planning board. So, is there somewhere else that we can go to that can make them stop until this is resolved? Because, you know, they destroy the inside of house.
And there's nothing.
Then, you know, you know what I mean? They destroy the historical nature of it.
As a citizen, you could probably consult a lawyer.
Or it's catches on fire, you know?
So, you can probably consult the lawyer as a private citizen, but the board itself, again, we're, we're confined. And you can see what avenues you have that way.
Yeah.
The town lawyers can't help us with that?
The town council.
Yeah.
Okay. And I, I don't know if it's worth repeating some of the other things that have ever come up from the last meeting. And if not, I'm good. You know, you know, the issues of the traffic, you know, that sort of thing, the water pressure and all of that and value of the decrease in homes that will occur. And I think that's all you need to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else have any comment? Me? Well, please come.
Real quick.
Lance Gano wanted to Peckerschuck Street here just to support everyone else here. You know, I don't live in the neighborhood, but as, as a family, as an Auburn family, you know, I, I support the opinions of everyone here. So, just wanted to add that.
Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Sir, Dorothy Agreeno for Prentice. Is there any, would, would it possibly be advisable to renovating the house into, you know, I mean, would they, into like...
I, I have, I have no idea. Norman...
To the outside structure, would we make the same and just like people would be able to come and, I mean, there's like different driveways and different entrances and just so it doesn't like destroy the look.
Did you hear that question, Norman?
I, I don't know of any plans to renovate the building. I, I hear what people are saying and it kinda touches a chord with me. I'm probably gonna recommend, and you might wanna consider this, I'm gonna recommend that my client offer the building to sale to the town of Auburn. I don't know who we would talk to at the town of Auburn to negotiate a sale. I don't even know if you have funds available. I know, I know in the, in the...
You don't have to talk to him.
Towne Grapton, I live, I live in Towne Grapton. There'd be a tremendous bank of funds available. Every time someone sells a home, a certain percentage goes into this fund. And there's a lot of money available for historical and artistic...
Not in this town.
Programs. So, I, I don't know. I'd recommend my client offer this building to sale because you have it at the town of Auburn.
You would have to talk to the town manager. And if they had any inclination, they're not gonna pay a penny more than you, they did. They walk away clean and free. All harm no foul. Neighborhood stays intact. But I'll buy it for two hundred thousand. How's that?
I would too. I'll go for two oh one.
Two oh two. One thing I'm gonna say here is a couple of years ago, we got a similar situation on a side street off of Oxford Street North. They wanted to put a home behind a bunch of homes and it was deemed not fitting in the neighborhood. It's the only avenue I have that is not, it's not conducive to the same style as the neighborhood. It's the only way that I know of that I can present it to the board and get a decision that way. But they're coming back in a month, so I'm gonna do some research on that. But that, that gentleman was denied a permit to build or cleared or anything.
Through something.
No, through us. Through us, it was denied by us. I was with, with the chair.
Just a quick thought. Since this gentleman was nice enough to make that...
Could you move your mask? I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Um, just a quick thought. If this person is willing to go to his people's top object, would they also be willing to put a hold on anything done inside until the historic people can look into their things and maybe look at that? Would they be willing to verbally okay that they will put a hold on anything on the inside of the house right now?
Did, did you hear that, Norman?
Yeah, I don't think my client wants to put a hold on anything.
Have they done anything to the inside yet? You know, that you know of?
I don't know. I haven't been in the house.
Cause if they demoed any, they're in violation of the town bylaw. They have to have a demo permit.
Yeah, I haven't been in the house. I don't know what's going on or anything.
That's up to the building inspector.
Still making some calls.
Call the building inspector tomorrow.
Yep. Has there been an awful lot of noise up there? So, something was done?
Like saws, power tools, all kinds of stuff. Yeah.
How, how recent?
Um, I'm saying this, this is today.
I mean, you're right behind it. We hear it.
Yeah, literally. I hear it. I'm not directly from...
Inside, outside.
Nothing looks different outside.
No, so they're doing something inside.
And maybe, maybe they were just cutting boards to secure the structure because they got two-by-four over the barn door and they got a piece of plywood over the porch floor. I don't know. How long's that? Take an hour?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know what they've done inside. I tried to look in the windows. When I was there, I couldn't really get close enough to see because they're high on the boards. That's in a place you can go, but...
Well, if this goes through, this will destroy our property values right behind it because no one will ever buy a home on Thomas Ave with these houses looking right in.
Or Prentice Ave either.
And you, the only other suggestion I would have, Norman, to your client, if they wanna avoid a lot of hassle, and this is just my own opinion, is you, if you wanna take off the additions that have been put into that house in the twentieth century and restore the rest, subdivide the land, put up, get an up lot right there, I think for five or six homes, that would be conducive to that neighborhood.
At least three.
I recommend that.
We were thinking three, but five is, I think, a lot. Sixty thousand, sixty-two thousand RFP. It's a quarter rate or a lot.
Yeah, but the way that house is set up, it takes up quite a bit of...
Yeah.
But it depends on what addition is where, where the property lines run. That I don't know. It's just something I've been thinking about since the last meeting. Cause I know somebody mentioned it from the audience that if they put in homes, those single-family homes, something like it, nobody would have a complaint? All you still have a complaint is a layer down your backyard.
And I don't think a single-family home is gonna have a deck thirty feet up looking into it.
True, true. So, I would just take that to your clients, Norman, because I think you're in for a battle. And it's not from, it's not from the planning board. It's gonna be from the people that live in that neighborhood.
We're gonna keep going.
Just, just to add something, Mr. Anderson and I are very close friends. I was born, I was born on Central Street. And he told me that much of the wood the house was built on, was built with, was cut at the sawmill that Prentice opened.
Across the street.
The street.
Yep.
And he did this. So, the wood the house was built with was cut at the sawmill. But he, he also told me the home was built in stages. You just, you just reminded me when you said it. The home was built in stages, that, that the older section would be the section that's closest to Central Street. And then they added on. It was always two stories though, but they added on. And if you were in the house, you'd see how, how there's a difference in the construction. But my mother also says, she's gone now, she swore to me that there were gun ports and on the first floor, there were gun ports on each side of the fireplace in case those Native American attacks, the settlers could defend the home. She swears she saw those.
Well...
And they're coming up now, can't...
Yeah, but they'd be on the outside of the house as well. The siding. The only way to find that is to take the siding off.
And you know, that roof is replaced like twenty-two years ago, maybe? Like a tree fell, crashed and threw it and the roof is replaced. So, it's not an abandoned building.
No.
Although it's looking like it.
No.
Roof is not that old.
Just a question for the historical people that are here. If this gentleman says this true, there was gun ports, applied D and Ds, would that make it more of a historical recommendation to the state or whatever?
I don't know for sure. I can say that that was not an unusual feature for a lot of homes of that era. So, and again, as the gentleman mentioned, the house was built in stages and that has been recorded and is part of the Massachusetts Historical Records. And it was built and moved on in stages over the two hundred fifty years. over the 250 years. And again, that's not unusual for an England colonial...
Not at all. Thank you. They still has the original windows in, from what I've seen. They still has the original windows in, from what I've seen. Any other questions? Can I have a motion to continue this to the next meeting? One month, not the next meeting, but a meeting one month from now?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Arkesh?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, aye. We got you. Continue with Norman.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I will make those recommendations for my client. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, applicant NJ Realty request a site plan of all in. Section 3.2.7.6. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
3.2.7.6 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a motor vehicle repair shop at 5 St. Mark Street, Auburn, Mass., map 50, parson 61. Continued from 9/28/2021. Is there anyone here representing NJ Realty? I knew you'd be here.
How's everyone doing this evening?
Good, how are you?
Excellent, thank you.
Hiding in the hallway.
Hiding in the hallway.
So, I think I have an idea what's going on?
Yes.
Could you give us a rundown so the public knows?
Certainly. So, for the record, Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering, here on behalf... Am I supposed to be masked up? I'm sorry.
Oh. Does anybody wear a mask?
What's that?
You want to wear a mask? I'm sorry.
I must be loud.
No.
Reagan told me I had to.
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering, here on behalf of NJ Realty Trust for the property at 5 St. Mark Street. So, at the last meeting, I think a fair summary is that the one outstanding issue was the fence proposed at the top of the retaining wall. So, I sent an email to Mr. Bernard, who reached out to town council to see the possibility of installing the fence on the existing wall or moving the wall. And the response, and I'm summarizing, so correct me if I'm wrong, is the response is that we really need to speak with the town administrator. So, fortunately, we had that opportunity this afternoon. And after a brief discussion, the resolution was that we will construct the fence and donate it to the town of Auburn, so it's their fence on their right of way. And there'll be a memorandum of understanding between the Patricks and all successors entitled. They elect to sell the property to maintain the fence and the retaining wall, which honestly is in their best interest anyway, since it's along their front edge, and the retaining wall is above where they'll have vehicles parked. So, I think that was a really good solution that the town administrator came up with, and I wanted to thank Adam for helping me over the last two weeks to get to that point. So, what we're hopeful this evening is that the board would take a vote to conditionally approve. The conditions would be that we submit a revised set of plans that address those couple minor typos that Graves pointed out. We held off on making any plan changes in case we were moving the wall and changing the parking, and that would kind of snowballed into a big set of revisions. So, we would have that condition, and also a condition that we execute a memorandum of understanding with the town that we're paying for the fence, we're maintaining the fence, and we're maintaining the wall forever.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the board?
That memorandum is legally binding. Does it attach with the deed, or?
Yes.
There's no public left here, so I don't give any public comment. Do they have a motion to, do you have a comment?
No.
They have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, aye. It is a vote to close the hearing. Now, can I have a motion to approve the plan based on the final agreement between the town and the Patrick family to maintain the fence and the wall forever and ever and ever, no matter who owns the land?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it. Question of the plants.
Yeah, question of the plants. With that shown on it.